I'd like to call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any additions to the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
We're moved.
Second.
We need an adjustment. There's no closed session. It said closed session. There's no closed session.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion with that elimination of a closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Committee reports. Policy.
We met in May here and all the policies that we reviewed were annual reviews that no changes made.
It's nice to have those all updated and on schedule now. Southwest Metro.
Southwest Metro had their last meeting for the school year on last Tuesday. We don't usually meet during the summer months unless there's something very important that's pending and that calls for our meeting. And we haven't had that happen in quite a while. So that was our last meeting of the school year. At the meeting, we had a report from one of the programs, and that was a photography and graphic design program. This is a very nice program that allows students to learn a lot about photography and graphic design. And the nice thing about this program and the way they do it is that they give real-life experience to kids. One of the things that they do, for example, is they take senior pictures of students that are graduating at Southwest Metro, and they do it absolutely for free for students that can't afford it or, you know, for some other reason can't get it done by a professional photographer. So that's one of the things that they do. And they also do some other really neat things as well to provide service while they're learning about the graphic design and photography at this program. Then we had a report from the administrators of the various programs, and the year ended off very well. The programs were basically quite full, and everything went well in the programs. We're having several graduations from different programs, and those will be coming up in the next week or two. The school officially ends, I believe, on the sixth at Southwest Metro. So all in all, it was a very good school year, and we're looking forward to next year having some new members coming onboard as ad hoc members, so to speak, and see how that goes.
Thank you. CPAC?
There was no CPAC meeting.
Any community ed?
Community ed, we met in May also, and we had a presentation done by Gabe Podrats, I think is how you say his last name. He took first place in his group in the Math Masters. So him and his coach, Mr. Craig Larson, came in and talked about it and just talked what the experience was like and what they went through. They're trying to get that more expanded and have fourth grade do it, too. They talked about security at the CEC, signing in for ECFE classes and community ed classes, and wristbands for fitness classes now. Fall brochure in August 1st, and they're looking to do another community movie for singing in the grain sometime in the near future. They're talking about Dozinki, but nothing's for sure.
Good. Sounds fun. Wellness.
No. Nothing there.
Early childhood. They didn't meet. Superintendent report.
Yes. Well, first of all, and I know most of you read it in the news, people, but legislature end up settling with the governor. Good news for us, for all school districts, public school districts, that 2% and 2%, and that's what Sandy had been planning on, so, and she's going to go with the budget report today. So that was a positive thing. And then in future years, 2021, 2122, also addressing the cross-subsidy with special education, increased costs there to help that out. And then there's a one-time funding for Safe School, stuff like that. So all in all, very positive in that regard. The other thing I want to give you an update. Met with Brad Skogarbo this morning. We talked about the study that was conducted this past spring on the future viability of our middle school sports programs of basketball, softball, and baseball. We've completed the study. Got to be honest, we didn't get, and I've told you that, not much feedback from parents at all. But we have, like I said, met with coaches. We've talked about it a little bit. But we've decided that these sports will remain as an offering for middle school students next year, 2019, '20, and that we'll continue to monitor and evaluate these activities in the year ahead. And, you know, we take, you know, great pride in offering a quality and comprehensive curricular activities program, and we'll continue to do that. But like I said, we'll monitor and evaluate as we go here to the future. So hopefully, things will go better this next year, and we're optimistic for that. But like I said, we'll monitor it. Next thing. Then again, this Friday, be our last staff day before graduation that night. We've got a breakfast social at the high school from seven to eight, and then we'll have our year-end celebration program. So obviously, the board isn't all invited to come to that. It should be a fun morning, and before we have our teachers check out and staff check out for the rest of the year. As far as good news, I shared with you on Friday, but just want to publicly thank the Mayo Clinic Health System. They had their community stakeholder breakfast last Tuesday, and they have this annual meeting to provide updates regarding their organization and talk about the future of healthcare. And one of the things, too, is to highlight community engagement efforts. And the New Prague Schools, along with the city of New Prague, together, we received the Outstanding Community Engagement Award, so we have a plaque for that, and it's for, you know, obviously making contribution to the health of our communities. So we're going to put the plaque up near the entryway to our Fitness and Aquatic Center. And with the Mayo Clinic Health System, obviously, we do a lot of our, a couple of our high school classes. We collaborate with them, and obviously, we do a lot of collaboration with the city. So it's a nice award to receive. I guess another good news right now is the forecast for Friday. Like I told you in my email last week, there's no way it's going to keep raining, so, but I know I shouldn't say anything. Knocking on wood right now, but forecast does look good on Friday. And right now, I like our new Raven Stream principal, Jeremy Ingerbretson. I invited him to come tonight. I know some of you were able to be introduced to him before the meeting, but Jeremy, you ought to just say a few words, give you a little background, and then if anyone has any questions for him, we can put him on the spot because you guys didn't be part of the interview process, you might want to throw him right now a little bit. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Hi, everybody. I'm excited to get to be here tonight and meet you guys. I currently work in Eastern Carver County Schools. I've been the dean, administrative dean at Victoria Elementary the last three years. And prior to that, I taught for 16 years, most of that in Minnetonka, and I was an instructional coach there for the last few years. So I'm really excited to join the New Prague Schools and get to know you more and more. I have a wife who teaches fifth grade at Clover Ridge in Eastern Carver County, and I have three daughters. My oldest is graduating in two weeks from Chaska High School, and then I have a ninth grader currently at Chaska High and a sixth grader at Middle School West in Chaska. So I'm looking forward to a couple of weeks from now when I get to kind of shift gears and start thinking more and more about all of you and Raven Stream.
Okay. You want to have any questions or comments?
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much, Jeremy, for coming tonight, and we really look forward to working with them.
My gosh. Here you are by the trash can in the corner. Wait, should I take a picture from back here? All right. Any more updates? Are you doing the parent survey?
Yep.
All right.
On a roll, might as well keep going. All right. We've been doing this annual survey, parent survey, for the, this is the sixth year, sixth year of superintendent, and it's tied into actually my superintendent goals. One of them was to improve the rating, anything that was below 90%, and when we say 90, when we talk about these percentages, that's parents that agree or strongly agree with the statement. This survey was sent out May 1st. We left it open for two weeks. We had nearly 700 responses from pre-K through 12th grade parents, and we've provided the comments and feedback to the departments and buildings in those areas. Guess it's a little hard to see right there, but I'll just go over some of the highlights on it there. The first part of the survey, community education, offering innovative and engaged activities, programs, and services for me and my child. It's at 95%. And I should mention this, of the 32 questions or statements, I'll call them statements, 25 of the 32 parents rated 90% agree or strongly agree of a rating of that or higher. So 25 of the 32 are 90% and above. Some of the other highlights. The environment, my child's school supports learning, that's at 90%. The education offered to students at our schools of high quality, 97%. Teachers use technology to engage students in learning. That was at 98%. Kudos again to our custodial staff. Our schools are clean and well-maintained at 98%. Security and safety is very important. My child's school, my child feels safe at school, that's at 97%. And then just overall satisfaction with my child's school, 97%. So everything, again, we had, you know, looking back, I went back to, looked at the year 2014, six years ago when we first did the survey. 27 of the 32 areas have a higher rating than we did in 2014. So it keeps getting better and better. And then in relation to the superintendent goal about improving the rating from last year, anything was below 90%. Four went up, none went down, and two stayed the same. So we're trying to, again, continuous improvement, and we're getting, I guess, good feedback from our parents, and, you know, we continually strive to do better. So just wanted to share that with you. I know it was in the board docs in the packet for you to look at. You can look at it in more detail. So those are very positive. Any questions?
So Tim, the only one that I noticed that went down is always one of them that we're concerned about, and that's the communication with the parents.
Yeah, that one went down by four percentage points. It's still, you know, you look back at 2014, '15, we were at 84.
Oh, it's better than it was.
Better than it was. But yeah, it dropped. That was really the only drop.
That's the only one I saw when I looked at it earlier.
Yeah, the only drop, there's a couple that dropped one percentage points. But yeah, that was the only one that went down. But then again, relatively speaking, compared to past years, it was good.
But we're still doing, you know, written and web and flyers going home with kids. We're still doing all the modes that we've been doing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, and then the other things, yeah, I think that was probably the one down, you know, and put things in perspective, I mean, one of the things was, you know, it didn't get above 90%, but it's still with nutrition services. That's improved considerably through the years, even though healthy meal choices, I mean, at 88%, you look back five, six years ago, is at 74 and 77. So that's at an all-time high. Also proud to say, too, that our buildings, that they feel like it's welcoming environment. That's at 96%. And then the other one I forgot to mention, too, is providing high-quality fine arts. That's stayed strong. It's at still 96%. So we'll, the one thing also that needs to, you know, we're looking at is just the guidance for students in ninth through 12th grade. You know, it's at 70%, which is better than it used to be, but that's an area that we're going to continue to look at to see what can do better, too.
Why is that so low? Are we not doing a good job providing that information, or are parents not getting the word, you know, from the kids or from the school?
I have not talked to Nicole about this. This is something that we worked with Lonnie and our former principal Lon, and like I said, it has gotten better. We've added a counselor three years ago, which obviously, for our size school, we really needed. But it has been a focus, and I'm going to talk to Nicole about that, and probably down the road here, we'll probably have her and a little presentation on what the strategy will be to improve on that. But I think do better. It has improved, but it's got to get better than we're doing right now. But that is a focus. I mean, that's part of our whole district strategic plan is that. A big part of it.
Everything else is in the high 80s, and then you see that one there. I was just wondering if the word's not getting to the parents that there is, that there is guidance, or if that's just an area we really need to beef up.
Yeah. I think it's an area that we got to continually work on and get better. I mean, we're not, I know Nicole's not going to be or is satisfied with this right now, and we'll get better at it. Look at it in a positive way, but, you know, you have to admit that, you know, it can get better. Anything else?
Thank you. Next, we'll have the preliminary 2019-20 budget.
Good evening. The first thing I want to talk about is the 18-19 projected results. Excuse me. So at the end of the year, last year, we ended up with almost $10 million in total fund balance, and unassigned was 8.3 million, which was a 20.7% unassigned fund balance, keeping in mind that our goal is 8%. The revised budget would have shown us going down to about 17% unassigned fund balance. The projected actual is going to be better than that, and I really hope it is going to be better, too. We still have a lot of unknowns at 18.2%. The revenue is actually going to come in slightly under budget, just about $50,000 just because of a special ed aid proration that I thought the legislature was going to fix, but they didn't. So again, because of, you know, tuition bills and so forth, that could change a lot by August, September, but that's going to come in slightly under budget. Expenses are coming in 1.2% under budget, which is about $500,000. So that's a positive, definitely. So the preliminary budget overview, excuse me, would show us dropping in fund balance. And, you know, we have been losing fund balance for, this will be the third year. It kind of ebbs and flows a little bit, but we would project that our fund balance would be at about 12%, which is still above the 8% guideline. Our revenues, the revenue assumptions that I made, I only anticipated 303 kindergarteners. We're currently at 316. For the second reading of the budget in June, I might update those numbers. I decided not to for the preliminary, but I might update those numbers. And it shows us going up 1.1% in enrollment, which is about the average. We've been going up 1.0, 1.5% a year. Put 2% on the formula. That was looking rather iffy last week, so I was hoping that would come through, and it did. And it's showing a 2% increase in special aid. This does not include the special ed cross-subsidy reduction aid that Tim talked about earlier. My second reading of the budget will include that. I'm going to legislative update tomorrow morning. I believe for next year, Tim got some preliminary numbers, it'll be about $75,000. Next year, the following year, that would be like $250,000, so that's much more significant. Other revenues I've assumed will remain fairly flat. The staffing changes, again, just to remind you and also update a little bit, that Raven Stream is still planning to decrease 1.0 FTE. Falcon Ridge, we are going to be adding 1.0 FTE. We added a fifth grade. That class size was getting up to 29.8, I believe, so almost 30, the average class size. So Tim made the decision a couple of weeks ago, I guess, to add fifth grade at Falcon Ridge. And Eagle View will still increase 1.0 FTE, which is no change from our first discussion. And then again, you know, these may changes, enrollments coming over the summer. We don't know what happens over the summer. Right now, most of our class size guidelines or our class sizes are pretty much in the center of the range or slightly below. So I'm hoping that even if we, you know, do increase significantly over the summer or some over the summer, it won't be changing to our overall FTEs. And that's just added revenue to us then. Middle school, again, we added that small FTE in German due to the large allied class sizes. High school, we did increase a 2.0 FTE based on higher-than-expected enrollment, those areas that we've talked about before. And then we're holding on the CLC staffing for 19-20. Special education, we are adding 1.0 FTE at the middle school and a .5 chemical health specialist, but that is mostly covered by additional grant money from Scott Family Net. Will only cost the district an additional $10,000. Some other information about our preliminary budget, we put in, I always put in 100,000 district contingency. We've never really gotten into that, but I just like to have that little bit in there. Excuse me. I estimated salary and benefit costs because all of our contracts are unsettled. So that's at open starting July 1st. So I, what I tend to see, what I have a tendency to do is, for the non-salaried or the non-certified, I look back to see what is our average settlement's been, and, but they could be different than the actual settlement that we come to. For teachers, it's hard to do the history because we've been trying to do some catch-up. So really had to estimate that based on where I think we might settle. One thing that's changed is this last year, we had a lot of open custodial positions, and we couldn't fill them, and so actually saved us quite a bit of money. But next year, we hope to be fully staffed, and so that will increase the budget some. You know, we want to be fully staffed for custodial positions, but this year, we actually saved quite a bit of money just because we couldn't find people. We also need to buy three school buses this year, two from capital, but I did add one from the general fund. We're on a track now that we have to replace three school buses a year for the next several years. We have a slight decrease in the general fund chargeback for the aquatic center usage for sports and fayed, which is really good news because the Fitness and Aquatic Center is losing a lot less money than it did that first year, so that's really good news. And put in a 5% increase in health insurance for non-certified groups. Our renewal was a 5% increase this year. The capital plan, this is where you're going to see a lot of projects this year, a lot of needs, and they're pretty significant. So special projects are going to total almost $400,000. For technology, it's almost $100,000. And we have, we were made aware of some E-Rate funding that we had available to us, and so the E-Rate funding is in addition to the $94,800. We want to upgrade our firewall. We want to purchase some network access control software that'll give us more control over our wireless network. And we are having, we're forced to replace our wireless microphone because of new FCC regulations. Those things happen really out of our control, and we have to replace all of our microphones. So there you go. That's just one of those things we have to do. Buildings and grounds, pretty significant. The biggest is the high school science classroom. That alone is about $210,000. We were able to use some LTFM funds, but very little. So that is pretty significant. The others aren't very significant, but I listed them there. Then we're able to use some Fund VI stadium funds. We still have a little bit of money left from our bond that we sold back in 2014 for our stadium, and we have some asphalt repair to do, and we're able to use some of that money for that. We'll still have just a little bit left, but that'll almost be gone. And then we're able to use some of our Fund VI LTFM funds to add a boiler at the CEC for the aquatic center. Right now, for the aquatic center, for the CEC, we have one boiler, and if we put in another one, we are able then to not run that boiler all summer for the entire building. We can just run it for the aquatic center. So that will be a big cost savings to the district and the city, actually, for the joint powers. And we have, that was actually an optional, an option when we went out to bid for the high school roof and AC project, so we can use some funds for that. And then we have our regular annual allocations for technology, things like computer replacements, you know, miscellaneous hardware, software that we use on a regular basis. We have lots of ongoing technology costs. And then we also have about $400,000 for non-technology uses, including two buses. And there's also that additional street assessment this year for the, I forget what they're doing.
Roundabout.
Yeah.
Roundabouts?
Yeah. So that assessment's going to start next year.
For the roundabout capital.
Yeah. Then long-term facilities maintenance, we actually, we'll have to have a new 10-year plan approved by the board at the June meeting. I would have had it ready, but the documents aren't prepared yet from MDE, so I couldn't have it ready for tonight. Just kind of outlined what those expenses are for, and you'll be getting more information on that at the June meeting. The biggest thing there is the $92,000 for the high school carpet replacement. That's a lot, but that will finish up the carpet replacement at the high school, which we've been working on, I think, almost since I started here. That is a big job. It's a big, big building.
And then you have to start over.
Yeah. Then we could get to some, you know, now we're looking at the two elementaries that we built. I mean, they're ready to start doing some replacements soon, so it's crazy that carpet cycle just keeps on a-going. Nothing else really to comment there. So this just shows you a picture of our general fund balance history, just, you know, dropping slightly this year and next. Oh, that didn't come through. You know, sometimes we have problems with that when we make it, turn them into PDFs, and I don't know why, but we do. These are, yeah, I don't know why that happens, but anyway. I mean, in the budget document itself, there's the projected year-end balances. Let me just run through them real quick.
Yeah, it is, the one that's on board docs.
We have it in front of us.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good.
And they're just fine.
Yep. So staff development, we'll end up this year with a slight fund balance, which we haven't had for a while, and the next year, we'll end up with about $15,000. LTFM is the big one. You know, we, that was phased in over a period of a few years, and now we are at the full implementation. And because we've done so many projects through our bond, our big bond in 2015, you know, we don't have a lot of uses for that right now. So we have a couple of options. One would be, we were hoping the legislature would approve another use for those, and that would be for security and safety upgrades in our buildings. That did not get into the omnibus bill, unfortunately. That's the second time they've tried that, and I think when they got all together, they just decided not to do that. So there's still hope that that could be done next year because we do have, you know, significant security and safety upgrades we could do, but right now, we can't spend the money on that.
But all the LTFM projects that you have listed for next year are coming out of that fund, right?
Yep, they are coming out of that. And the bond payments are coming out of that, too, for the high school roof and AC project. You know, we do have to start putting money away for our artificial turf replacement. I mean, obviously, we did that almost five years ago now. Those, you know, we're thinking it's going to last 12 to 15 years, but we don't know for sure right now. It's showing very little wear, Craig said, so we're in good shape there. Then the other option is if we really can't use the funds, we can under-levee in that area. We can under-levee our taxpayers if we're really not going to be using those funds. So we'll have to be taking a look at that over the next year or so. And then the other funds I present in June, that we have, of course, our food service fund, our community services fund, as well as our construction and our bond service fund. So the next steps, I'll be presenting a final budget for approval on June 24th. We have to have a budget approved by July 1st per statute. September, we'll have updated enrollment numbers. October, we get our audit results. December, I do a final budget, and then January, update the five-year financial projections. Seems like we do this every couple of months, but it really is only once a year. Yeah. Yeah. So that's all I have to present tonight. Do you, are there any questions or comments that I can entertain or answer?
Very clear report.
Okay. And you don't have to vote on anything tonight.
Next, the MIST renewal?
Yeah, that is, usually I come here and I have great news.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's not the same this year.
I know, it's not such great news tonight. I know. It's, there's, and I'll, I didn't want to put everything into board docs because it's really a lot of information. As you recall, we moved to, to MIST for our self-insured pool in 1314 with seven members. And we have 23 districts now, so the pool is still growing. We, you know, the whole concept is to retain a portion of the predictable losses, just like you do for self-funding for health insurance. And then you transfer the catastrophic risk, risk to the insurance companies. And also, the intent is to broaden the insurance program. For instance, we've been able to add cyber insurance pollution. And we're also able to, we've also been able to increase our coverages in certain areas. So it's, because you have such a huge buying pool, right now, our, our current insured values of the pool is $4.3 billion with over 84,000 students. So it's been a, you know, it's growing and you have a lot of purchasing power. Unfortunately, this year, you know, we have, we have, I'm on the board for MIST. And, you know, we have quarterly meetings. And the last meeting we had, they were saying, you know, the person that helps us manage the pool was saying, you know, things are looking, you know, like a, a pretty good renewal. And, and then he went to a, a meeting in Chicago and about three weeks after that meeting and just heard something totally different from the carriers. It's an extremely hard market. And basically, what's happened is that it's a hard market due to the natural disasters in the, in the United States. If you, you know, you think about the fires and the floods and the hurricanes and the tornadoes, look at what happened this last weekend. How many tornadoes were there, 100 and, I don't know, it's crazy. And particularly in the Midwest. The Midwest has been a pretty soft market because there's not a lot of natural disasters, but that's really changed with all the hail and tornadoes and the flooding that we've had. And really, insurance companies are really starting to look at that Midwest book of business and say, you're not, you know, you're not covering your, your costs. To give you an example, so we have paid over $3 million to our excess carrier Hartford over the last, over the, the life of the pool. We have not made one single claim.
Huh.
Not one. We've paid them $3 million in, in premiums. And they basically dropped us. They basically dropped us and said, you know, we'll give you this huge increase, plus you can't add any more people to the pool. It was crazy. So, you know, our, the manager of the pool, Arthur J. Gallagher, you know, did a very good job. They went back. And we are switching our, our excess carrier, but we still got a huge increase. So the total pool increase was 21.7%. We started at 28.5%. So you add that along with MIST, the largest claim right now that MIST has in the six years is New Prague Area Schools, the claim with the bus accident. So that has now started affecting our rates. So, because that happened last year. And so that is the single biggest claim MIST has had to date. So you add that, you know, because it's partially experience rated, I mean, you're part of a pool, but you still have to, you still, they still look at individual claims to some extent. So we got a 30.7% increase this year. So I want to put that in perspective. So the fixed cost increase was about $24,000, but the loss fund increase was $18,000. And that's our money if we don't use it. So the actual, you know, a lot of the increase was, was money that if we don't use, we will get back someday. Also, if you look at the, the annual, average annual increase over the last six years, it's, for the district, it's only 5.2%. And that includes the additional cyber pollution and all of our new construction values, because our, our values have gone up significantly over that, that six-year period. If you look at the excess property rate itself that, that we're paying on the excess property, it's only a 2% increase per year. In the past, they have been able to negotiate decreases in the excess insurance. And so now we got kind of a big increase, but if you look at the chart, it, it went down and then it went up again. So it's, it's not as, when you put it in historical perspective, it's not as bad as it seems, although still not very happy with it. The pool also has a net position right now of over $800,000. So that is money that we have, that we've put into our pool that has not been spent. New Prague's share of that is almost $60,000. And we have a surplus return policy that will come into play over the next couple of years, and we will start getting money back that we haven't spent. So again, you gotta, you have to kind of put it in perspective. This is still the best long-term plan for the district. It's just, and, and other pools that they have are getting much worse renewals than what MIST got. I mean, they were talking 50% increases. It's crazy in the Midwest. So insurance companies are just looking at this market and saying, too many natural disasters in this market, we are going to increase everybody's rates. So I would guess that that's probably going to happen to your homeowner's insurance as well, so you can buckle up for that. Yeah, it was, it was very, the guy who runs our pool has been running pools for years, and he said he has not seen anything like this since 9/11 in the insurance market. So, very unusual. So that was a long story for, so yeah, so $40,000, that's a big increase for our district. Any questions or comments?
But overall, it's still better than being
Yes.
cheaper to be in the pool.
It's definitely cheaper, and we have much broader coverage than we would have if we were on our own.
Are there any schools around in the Midwest who are getting their insurance canceled? Or?
Yeah, I understand. I hear through the grapevine kind of that schools are getting their, yep, they're just canceling. They don't even want to insure anymore. So it's just, it's just the market we're in. Insurance companies are losing a lot of money with all these natural disasters, and they've got to make it up somehow.
Wow.
They're not making as much money as they had in the past.
Right, right. Yeah.
Another way of putting it.
They made $3 million off of us and would hardly renew us.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't feel sorry for them or anything?
No, and you can't believe all the work that our, our, our pool advisor went to. I mean, we went to like, you know, 28 different insurance companies. I mean, they have, they just beat it, you know, beat the market, and it's just, this is the best we could get.
All right, any other questions? Thanks, Sandy. And this is something new, approving a school year calendar?
Oh, yeah, I would like a motion, I think, yes. Thank you, Janelle.
A motion to approve the MIST?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0. Now approving the school year calendar after the school year is over.
It needs to match our Mars file, what we're submitting to Mars. So, because, you know, if they come and audit us, which they have not done since I've been here, but they can come. And so really, what our, our Mars file shows needs to match what our school board approved calendar is.
We haven't done this for other snow days, though, have we?
We haven't, no. And I think we need to start doing it. Yeah, so this is the first year we've done that.
I'll make a motion to approve the final 2018-19 school calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0. Handbooks, not many changes in any of them. So we just have a bunch of approvals and resolutions left on the agenda.
Do the handbooks need approval?
Individual?
Yeah.
Yep.
Individual? Approval. Oh, well, either.
I'll make a motion to approve the Compass Learning Center handbook.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
I make a motion to approve the middle school handbook.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0. Resolution?
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the non-renewal of three probationary or non-tenured teachers. Those teachers are Melissa Schroder, Lori McManus, and Bridget Barnett. All three of them were probationary teachers and are not being renewed at the end of this school year. What we'll do is, we'll approve the consideration, and then I'll, I'll have a vote on each of the individual teachers after we do the reading of the, of the resolution.
Do you have?
Excuse me, yeah. Bridget Barnett is a .5 only non-renewal. She would still be with the district for .5, just I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and all the staff has been notified?
Yes, yes.
Do I have a motion to consider this non-renewal?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. It is recommended that the board terminate the non-tenured contract of Melissa Schroder, Lori McManus, and Bridget Barnett. Whereas these three teachers are probationary teachers in Independent School District 721, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District 721, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes, that the teaching contracts of these three teachers be terminated at the close of the current 2018-2019 school year. We'll vote first on the termination of Melissa Schroder. How do you vote, Leo?
I vote yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes. Mark?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Danny, yes, item passes. Next, how do you vote on the non-renewal for Lori McManus, Leo?
I vote yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Danny, yes, item passes. And finally, for Bridget Barnett, non-renewal, how do you vote?
.5 nor, non-renewal?
Point, point five.
That's a reduction, just a .5.
Point five.
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Now we have a couple for Southwest Metro?
Yes, the first one is the Southwest Metro Long-Term Facility Maintenance Resolution. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Resolution approving Southwest Metro Intermediate School District Number 288's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. The school board of Southwest Metro Intermediate School District 288 has approved a long-term facility maintenance program budget for its facilities for 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $275,000. The various components of the program budget are attached in this exhibit. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes. Next, we'll consider a motion to look at the resolution to accept the Southwest Metro Safe School Resolution. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Resolution approving Southwest Metro Intermediate School District Number 288's Safe Schools Program and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's pay for 2020 levy, be it resolved by the school board of 721 as follows. The school board of Southwest Metro Intermediate School District Number 288 has approved a Safe Schools Program budget for its program for the 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $220,000. The various components of the program budgeted are attached in the resolution. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next, we have a resolution to accept a donation from the Pickleball Association and State Farm.
At this time, I'll consider a motion for the resolution to accept the donation for the New Prague Area Pickleball Association.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the school board of Independent School District 721 has established a policy concerning acceptance of gifts, whereas the school board may accept a gift valued $1,000 or more only by adoption of a resolution of two-thirds of its members, whereas the New Prague Area Pickleball Association wishes to donate $3,000 for lines on the middle school tennis courts. Now therefore be resolved by the New Prague School Board of Education to accept the donation under no conditions. How do you vote on this resolution? Tammy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes. Next, we'll consider a resolution to accept the donation from the State Farm Insurance. Again, whenever we have a donation of $1,000 or more, it takes a resolution of two-thirds of the board members to approve the, the donation. Do I have a motion to consider the resolution?
So move.
I have a question. What are cell phone covers?
It's, they're, I think it's part of the driver's education program, right?
Hard case.
Okay, so you can't hear the, so it's covered, so you can't pick it up, right?
While you're driving.
While you're driving.
It was one of those things that came from Joe Tukowski's accident. He killed the cell phone signal so that phone rates, you're not, you don't want to answer your phone in the car, so you can't.
So this prevents, that prevents it from happening.
Everyone's going to get one, all the students are going to get one?
Yeah, but I'm proposing they use it during the school day, too.
Good luck with that.
I'm not sure who's getting it. I, I'm guessing it's going through driver's education, but I could be wrong.
Right, I'm not sure about that.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I figure we should take it, if it's, I mean, it's more safety.
It's a $5,000 gift, and like they say, never look a gift horse in the mouth.
Spoken from a true farmer.
Do I have a motion to consider this resolution?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas State Farm Insurance wishes to donate $5,000 for cell phone covers for high school students, now therefore it be resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education to accept the donation under no conditions. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes. And finally, the last resolution deals with our membership in the Minnesota State High School League. And this is something that we do every year to get us membership in the Minnesota State